Call me in order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Fire truck.
Me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, call order, real call, starting on my right.
Councilperson Josh Aaron.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Algen.
Bank buyer says hello from Cancun.
I can't believe he didn't zoom out, that's weak.
Approval of tonight's agenda?
Nothing additional from staff.
We'll approve.
You want this part?
Yes, we have two additional things from staff. We have the additional accounts payable listing and then we have the O M B loan signatures.
We'll approve.
Second, we got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries approval of council meeting minutes. Oh, God, we got a bunch of them. We'll start with the regular meeting minutes of November twenty-third. Look for a motion to approve after you look through them. We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, look for approval of special C I P workshop minute of November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve C I P workshop minutes, second.
Second that, too.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Last will be a special truth in taxation meeting of December seventh, minutes of that one. Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, that takes us to finance and budget, takes us to the council payable, and we have the additional listing in front of us here. Any questions directed to Finance Director Carlos Strain?
No one's come to handcuff you or interview you at all the last two weeks, right?
No.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that takes us to motions and general business.
Yeah, those fire trucks are expensive.
Public hearing. First item of the night will be class fifty-five, phase two, class and variances. Planning Commission met on December seventh to review the preliminary plat- final plat and hold a public hearing to consider four variances, the flats fifty-five, phase two. The planning commission approved all four of the variances and agreed to continue their meeting at five P M. tonight to review the flats. As the application was incomplete, city engineer over in county was unable to conduct a review. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing for the pre-final plat of flats fifty-five, where we will also consider the variance requests as well. So, we'll close the regular meeting, open the public hearing for the flats fifty-five. Public notice, notice is hereby given that the planning commission will consider the pre-final plat for flats fifty-five, second subdivision on December seventh at City Hall at six P M., and the city council will hold a public hearing on December fourteenth at City Hall at seven P M. Included with the plat will be the variance number one for the building height, variance number two, parking requirement reductions, variance number three, density and variance, and number four, deferred construction of a journey public roadway. Do we get any written or oral statements? Received none. Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Alright. Would we like to hear anything from our city engineer?
You got a problem with anything?
Not anymore.
Okay, I mean, you just sold everything today, it got hammered out today, basically. But nothing changes as far as what we had on here, because I know this is...
The variances are all still needed to do what they want to do. And, but the preliminary plat leading to the final plat, everything.
And if it averages out to be one point five parking spots instead of two, if the majority of these are one bedroom, theoretically shouldn't be that big of an issue, I wouldn't think.
Correct, and they do have an option, an optional area for an additional parking lot if necessary, they have space for it.
I thought we reduced it to the original, didn't we?
We have, we did reduce down the original. Basically, with these variances and what we're seeing from the original and this and I guess other areas of the city, we should really be really looking at our ordinances to begin with. We should not be going forward with many subdivisions with lots of variances all over the place. And Mike Mobani stated this, this to staff. However, we're in our comp plan rewrite right now, and that's, that's kind of the lead up to, okay, let's go into our ordinances and rewrite everything that needs to be rewritten to meet our plan. So, this is just coming in right before we're ready. So, I would hope that our ordinances in the future would read to allow this type of development.
So, the only question I had, too, is on like the deferred cut, deferred construction part of it, so there, there's already a road being planned to be added on, just to the north of these properties that's supposed to be going into twenty twenty-two, is that right?
So, yeah, our ordinance does state that any land that wants to be developed, implanted, the frontages of public property that, um, public infrastructure needs to be built. And so, the variance is deferring that, that road access in at this time. They have their driveway, their access point necessary.
Right.
And part of that is to really figure out what's going out on north of them before we build in a road that then might need to get changed, so.
So, doesn't cause any prob- I mean, until we knock that big of an issue.
They are the landowners in the north, so it, it doesn't, it doesn't put prohibit anybody at this time, so.
That's all I got.
Any other questions from table? Was, uh, Mr. Welch or developers, anything you want to add or say?
Sure. Mark Welch, G Q Engineering, representing developers that are here also. Worked through, I think, everything, the little items that are remaining, we can take care of, that's not an issue. There was one comment about a question of making this an outlaw for potential of public drainage onto it. We discussed it, and we are just going to keep this as being private, and we don't need to bring public water when this road is developed, and we can deal with that at a later date. So, we want to keep with the easement as opposed to the outlaw, so.
So, time for, for stuff, you're, like, you guys want to get going right away, this winter on construction already, on building two?
For tax purposes, we need to move forward to get the plat recorded before the end of the year, and then this building number, uh, this is right here, this building number two would get started as soon as possibly can in the spring.
And is there already a game plan for number three, or does it just wait to see how you fill out, right?
Wait and see, correct. But by going through the site plan and everything right now, the entitlements are essentially in place, and the utilities will be in place, and so it'll be a situation of coming back with building permits as opposed to coming back for any variances.
Did you guys, I realize the first one filled up pretty successfully, it was done faster than we expected, we read what on what the whole was, or where?
I'm pleasantly surprised.
Yeah, it's because there's only, what, three or four units the mayor says left?
Four, four or two bedroom units left.
And how many, out of how many units is that total?
Fifty-five.
Wow. Well, yeah, I guess I could have done the math and they all thought it's fifty-five. And I've done there, so you think I know. The Vikings do this, right, now they kill brains off.
Anything additional from staff or anyone?
Yep, applicants requested, they did it on the first one, a deferment on the park dedication fee until they have a eighty percent completion or occupancy rate on this. It did work out just fine, they've paid their obligation on that one, and so we're okay with that being a request for approval to, on this next phased item.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve, it sounds like everybody's on board.
We gotta get out of the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
If no one else has any other questions or anything you want to add, I'll close the public hearing, back to the regular meeting. Okay, now, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve.
Resolution approving flats fifty-five, phase two, and all the variances.
Yep.
You got a motion, we have a second.
A second.
We've got a second all over the place. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Start digging, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And your motto up in the stadium? Might get a party afterwards there, you don't know.
Yeah, I'll be in the room.
Alright. That takes us on to the next public hearing for tonight, the annexation hearing for County Road Thirty-five. In the light of the recent takeover of C S H number thirty-five from Austin County, staff has initiated the annexation process on the street. As for the joint orderly annexation agreement with High Forest Township, they approved the resolution for annexation on the December seventh meeting. The public hearing will be held at this time to consider any comments or objections. So, we're going to close the regular meeting, the public hearing is open on the annexation of County Road Thirty-five. Any written, oh, I gotta read that first to say. City of Sturridgeville has been petitioned to annex certain territory within the township of High Forest as described. County Road number thirty-five, ten streets northwest. Commencing at the southwest corner or the southeast corner of section twenty-eight, Township one oh five, North Range fourteen west. Complete legal description is unfiled at City Hall. The City of Sturridgeville will hold a public hearing at City Hall, one oh five East First Street at seven P M. on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, to consider the annexation request, written or oral statements will be considered. Do we have any written oral statements from anyone?
We'll have written ones, and that's based on the oral approval that the township gave. Mayor and I gave the same presentation to High Forest Township, and they approved it from their end, so those documents will be coming to add to our overall application.
Any questions from the table?
Well, sadly, yeah, I got another one.
Okay.
I just want to clarify in this, we have no obligation to anything regarding that bridge over I ninety.
No.
By taking this over, and it's just before that.
We are plowing it, and that's it.
Yeah, but it's far, but we doing it all, any fees, anything like that, that's not our issue, right?
Yeah, just before the bridge.
Okay. Is it, you guys are okay taking it on? Or you don't have a lot of choice?
We plowed it this time, Benji. You tell us what to do, we plowed it this time, we did.
So, with, we've already approved taking on the street, annexing it in, what it does for us is it allows us to put it on our state aid system. And so, since it was a county state aid highway, we can actually bring it into our system without take, taking part of our mileage for our system, so our system is all of our roads added up in miles, twenty percent of that can be applied to the state aid system. Well, this mileage here, a hundred percent of it goes onto our state aid system, but it doesn't come, go against any of our twenty percent. So, we're able to draw all those needs, except it has to be within city limits in order to do that. So, what it does is it brings our balance, our, our needs evaluation up compared to other cities, and hopefully would then bring our funds allotted up at the same time, so that would be why it needs to be annexed in.
So, that would annex in the width of the, the road, the right way of the road, is that we'd still, if we develop out there, we'd have to go back out later and annex it and more land?
Correct, just the road, the right way, that would come on.
But it does give us a little more flexibility also, Janet, doesn't it, for ingress and egress and all that, and as developers and stuff?
Yeah, so since now we are in charge of that road, because the county already voted on it, we had already voted on it, we are in charge of that road, we do get to make the rules per se of how, how to use and access the right way.
Sure.
So, the speed limit will change on, to them the same?
Can.
So, the speed limit can change, yeah, the statutes were recently rewritten so that the commissioner does not have to appoint the speed limit. However, there are rules of how you can change the speed limit, so it goes into studies and everything else, that's something we want to look at, we can start looking at that at whatever point, but we do now have the authority to study and create and maintain our own speed limits.
Bill?
I also had a meeting with the county, they said they'll prorate our maintenance agreement with them, so for this little bit of extra plowing we do up to County Road Eight, or if Public Works would help out with some dirt patching or patch, they're going to reimburse us for those costs, or just adjust that, a thing to pay us for that little bit of space, so.
Any other questions, any comments from the? Alright. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, open the regular meeting back up. Okay, the action request will be to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash, resolution between the City of Sturridgeville and High Forest Township extending the corporate limits of the City of Sturridgeville. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next item, resolution adopting final budget and certified levy. Number one, the approval of the twenty twenty-two budget after discussion is held. The twenty twenty-two proposed final budget is nine million forty-five dollars, two hundred and forty-two. Excuse me. Nine million forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. The truth of taxation, number two, presentation was held on December seventh to receive public comments, concerns, or additional input. In September, the council certified a preliminary levy of three million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars, plus the pool referendum levy of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and the fire hall referendum levy of one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. The council may certify this amount or lower this amount in the final levy. The attached resolution shows the revised levy amount is presented in truth and taxation at three million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Certified final levy needs to be adopted, sent to the county honor, honor before December thirty-first. Do we have any discussion about either of these questions, one or two?
What did we come to for our final number, as far as the percentage, was it just under, like, the percentage increase on the levy itself was just under four percent, like three percent, or no?
It was, yeah, like, three point three percent for the city portion.
I think the county's one at four, four and a half, or something, too, so.
Well, ours will only went up like, one and a half if we have to do the top contract.
Good point. Get that on the record for the idiot of the night.
Any other questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
No, we got two over here to go, correct, so the first one we're going to do is to approve or deny the twenty twenty-two final budget.
So, who'll do that?
We have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two final budget, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. On question number two, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash, a resolution approving twenty twenty-one tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us to the next item, resolutions committing capital and special revenue funds, another budget item. Resolutions committing general and capital funds of specific purposes. Number two will be committing specific revenue sources in special revenue funds. The twenty eleven governmental accounting standard board adopted G A S B E number fifty-four, which deals on how fund reserves are classified in governmental financing statements and reports. It is similar to the old designated reserve terminology that has been used in the past. The two resolutions attached are required as a condition of G A S B E number fifty-four. Number one, the first resolution committing general fund balances in the new method of transferring funds in and out of designated reserves that council have set up for specific projects or purposes. Number two, the second resolution committing to special revenue funds is to document what funds the city has approved, either by legal requirements or council approval, to be treated as a special fund. So, do we want a discussion, do you have any questions at the table? Before we move into the approval, and now. Hearing none, the council actually requested on number one, to approve or deny the resolution committing general fund balances for specific purposes and projects. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
With motion and a second to approve, any questions or discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, that'll take us to item number two, to approve or deny the resolution committing specific revenue sources in the special revenue fund. Motion?
I'll move in that.
To approve?
Move to approve, sir.
Second? Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next item under general business is Smith Schaefer contract and engagement letter for twenty twenty-one year-end audit. Attached, please find the proposal from Smith Schaefer to conduct the twenty twenty-one year-end financial audit and prepare the financial statement under all legal compliances. The proposal is for thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars plus expenses. The fee is five hundred dollars more than last year. Included in the proposal is the work needed for the application and necessary documentation for the G F O A's certificate of achievement. Council had previously taken action directing staff to obtain the certificate. The certificate is a national recognition of the city's financial and economic status, which will be used to determine all rebound ratings and economic development tool and a measurement of the council and staff's financial management of public assets. Council action requested would be to approve or deny Smith Schaefer Associates' proposal to conduct the twenty twenty-one year-end audit and prepare the financial statements and G F O certificate of achievement application. Did we? Give Carlo that award this year already? I don't remember, do we have a meeting, did we present that to you?
Yes.
I couldn't remember, thought maybe we should give it to you twice this year. Okay, do we have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make it prove.
Motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Now, we got a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit for Allstate Peterbilt. The planning commission held a public hearing on December seventh to consider the conditional use permit for section thirteen seventy-five point twenty-seven subdivision C point one, special fences for Allstate Peterbilt, six ten Schuman Drive Northwest. They are proposing a six-foot chain link fence that will run on the south line and a portion of the east property line. The purpose of this fence is for security due to all the recent thefts. The planning commission has recommended approval of the request. Council action requested is to approve the conditional use permit to allow for a specially used fence for Allstate Peterbilt. You, we're at that meeting?
I was not at this meeting.
Do they have fencing around the rest of it, like up against the highway or anything like that, or do they just figure by closing this door?
They've got the highway fencing up front.
The rest of the east side, I'm thinking, and the, along the west, I don't think they have fencing, which, I mean, that, that's perfectly fine if they figure it'd still be too problematic to get around to steal anything, but.
Where they coming in from?
The way things are now, people are coming in everywhere and stealing everything, so. It looks like they're just skating off their front driveway there, going a little bit around the east and then continuing to the west on the south of the road there, which obviously helps, but I'm surprised they're not just doing the whole thing.
Who's razor wire on top?
Uh-uh.
Is that loud out there? We kicked that out everywhere and don't.
It's, incidentally, but you can't have barbed wire. I'm sure razor wire would qualify for barbed wire.
No, that's a lot better than barbed.
A better deterrent.
You can usually get plenty of evidence off the razor wire.
I'll make a motion to approve the request, I know they've got good reasoning.
Yep, we have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Second, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Warm房house attendance, approval to hire will be the next item. In preparation for the hockey skating season, we are recommending the following to staff the warming house at Florence and Meadow Parks. Jacob Cho, Steve Cho, Kent Larson, new would be Steve Tittle, Andrew Yonick.
One thing with that, the, we're going to use the same approach we did last year with the hockey rinks, and we're only going to man one hockey, or one skating area, and that's going to be over at Meadow. When they come in, they will open up the one at Lake Florence, so it's open for them to use, and then go over to Meadow, and at the end of the night, come back and shut it back up. Did it last year, didn't have any problems, saves on some labor, but that one doesn't get near as much use without being a hockey rink there, so it's been working doing that so far.
Is Drew going to have to get a haircut so there's proper room for everybody to be in there warming up?
I've never seen him, does he have a vision here?
He can get a little crazy, good kid, though.
Yeah, it was nice to, I talked to him on the phone for a little bit, and it seemed like a good.
Nah, he's a good kid.
Alright, we're looking for a motion to approve the hiring and to staff our warming houses. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. Next item is another approval to hire part-time snow removal. Public Works Director Hale is recommending Tremis.
Plaid holes?
Plaid holes.
To fill all the positions to help with snow removal. Hale's also looking to fill one more position, would like permission to hire as needed, now, now that the snow season is upon us. So, the council action requested be to apply, approve the hiring of clear hoods for on-call storm removal and to approve Hale to hire as needed.
With that, so everyone understands, that is not bringing additional guys in, it is if we get a weekend call out and we have guys scheduled for vacation or something like that, it allows us to have the guys be gone and have the part timers, it actually saves the city money because you, you're not paying the overtime to a full timers, and it's only a full timers approval because they get first shot at the overtime, but if they request to be off, it gives us a little more flexibility. So, there's no really additional cost to it as far as man hours.
Union is cool with that?
How many guys want this, I mean, the benefits of it, they're the ones that want to be able to have more than one or two guys off at a time if they're scheduled for vacations and stuff.
Any questions, discussion? Any motion to approve the hiring, then? Do we ever get it?
We haven't done it yet, I'll move to approve.
We got a motion, we got a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Now, we gotta go off the, the board here for a second. We got general business, O M B loan signatures. We received a governmental certificate from O M B banks to certify the names that are authorized to sign the loan agreement, this is for the new fire truck purchase from Beers. The purchase and financing were approved at eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty-one company. Two signatures are needed to keep the loan, the three signatures.
Keep going.
File would be Jimmy John King, William H. Schimmel, Carlo J. Strain. So, the council actually requested to approve or deny the governmental certificate of signatures for the fire truck name. Do we have a motion, that's pretty straightforward, there's.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Sounds like a.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. Okay, the other item, twenty twenty-one year-end financial requests. The council had previously approved the cash flow needs for the water and sewer for twenty twenty-one projects, recognize that the retained earnings balance would be utilized. Formal approval of the use of enterprise designations to retain earnings should be considered. You?
So, this is just, um, this is just, based on, this is something that we do at the end of every year, this is just taking any of the funds that are left in those balance accounts that we're able to roll them, roll them over and keep them and have them then for future use need, or future needs that we need to use with ourselves.
Council action requested is to approve or deny the use of the enterprise designated retained earnings. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have another question that maybe needs to go on here, do we need to do a formal approval here, so any billing that comes in?
That's actually was one of the other things that I was going to bring up during my report, and so that is, yeah, I'm going to ask to see if any other bills that come in through the end of the year, um, any. Um, Angelie and I are planning on trying to run bills right at the end of the month to get encompassed as many as we can or to get through the end of the year. I would like your guys' blessing to be able to do that.
Do you need a formal motion for that or just say okay?
We should do a motion. And then if there is some real fluky emergency thing, we'd have to call you back into a special session. But these would be the regular ones.
We have a motion to approve the pain of any billings that come to the city before the year, before the next council meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Any last item you can think of before we get out of general business? You want to give the mayor and council big bonuses here or anything, or?
Not election.
Thinking about that or no?
Maybe we could throw another special meeting, get another 25 bucks in the old budget.
You guys go out, that matters.
Yeah, and actually this coming year.
I don't wanna be embarrassed like the Rochester City Council voting for such a huge raise.
Well, what you do, um, for us, it's our earlier, so when it's an election year coming up, because then if the citizens don't agree with it, they have a chance to voice their opinions. During the coming year, you can make a recommendation for those adjustments. And at some point in time, you, you should do that. It's up to each council.
I think the mayor should be within 20% of government salary, governor's salary.
Commission on the percentage of the rollover.
There you go. I'm the commission, I don't mind that either. All right, that takes us out of general business and the mayor's staff and its all reports. Tonight, the mayor's report. It's a long one. It's been a long couple of weeks, folks. We sympathy from the city of Spurfield to the families of Leon Eggers, Bev Zerodnik, Phyllis Swanson, David Weinman, Benny Bruzky, Arla Bernard, William Rodent, Doug Fine, Sonny Bergerson, Jeff Justice, Beverly Hanson, and Jim Pachik. It's been a rough couple of weeks. Winter Fest is over again, but it was a huge success again. The ladies put on a tremendous, pretty, a week-long deal. The tea was great, the night down the park was great, the public works came together on it, fire departments, the fireworks. It was a real nice thing for the community, it was perfect weather that night. You didn't get down there, the public works guys built a really cool fire pit on a great big rock stemmer from the wall, weren't they? So we got to reuse some of the wall for that, it's turned out good day, thanks. But thank all those volunteers and thank everyone that came out to enjoy it. Quan's Club has collected 700 pairs of brand-new socks up from the 400 socks donated last year. Just about doubled. Quan's Club distributes these socks to local programs in need. Now, don't forget, it's your last chance to order your Christmas cookies from the Center for Active Adults. Bill says they're really good, he enjoys several dozen every year. December 17th is the cutoff date. This is one of the major fundraisers for the center, so I hope everyone supports them. These cookies are delicious. Bill says they're delicious. He says they're almost as good as my mom's. Well, he really kisses up there. That Bill does. City Hall Christmas Open House will be December 22nd, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. We invite all community members to join in the festivities at Christmas with us. You come on in, you can have a drink of hot chocolate or have a little bit of dessert, just be a little merry. I'm planning on being here for a little while, or as much as I can be, I think Bill is, and Angelie, whoever else wants to stop in. You're all welcome, stop in, have a good time. Looking for a Christmas present to give someone in the family or another family, think of a family pool pass. It's always a good idea to think about swimming, get that cold weather under your system, think about the warm weather. Now, don't forget, if snow emergency artists is in place, don't get caught parking on our streets during the snow removal. You guys did a fantastic job of removing snow for the amount we got, the timing that it came. I thank you for that. Do we have a lot of problems to park in or not?
Uh, five terms?
Yeah, just.
That's great, glad people are starting to catch on to that. Don't forget, Christmas is definitely a child's favorite holiday, but Christmas season, don't forget. Your senior citizens or your member neighbor next door that may be by their self. They still enjoy Christmas without the hustle and bustle they've put into season in the past because their kids may be gone, as they sit by their chair, remembering the past years of Christmas fun, it does get lonely. Invite them over for a cup of hot chocolate and share some of them cookies that Bill's got. Take them for a ride to see all the beautiful lights, or just give them a five-minute phone call or a visit, that'd be much appreciated. It'll not only will warm their hearts, it'll warm your hearts for days to come. So don't forget about the seniors and just the single people that are by their self. With that, I'd like to wish all my fellow council members, all the tremendous staff we get to work with, all the outstanding volunteers in this community, and all the citizens of this great town, I wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have, that'll take us on to Bill's city administrator's report.
Shorter this time, really the only thing I wanna highlight, the mayor and staff met with Homestead County with regard to that, um, housing program they're working on and putting together. And right now, it looks like our city could have an allocation of up to a half a million dollars to use as an incentive for people to build new homes. And obviously, that's gonna have to work into developers' situations, landowners' situations to consider too. And according to Commissioner Flynn, if we were to get a great outpouring, there's the chance you could apply for additional. And so one of the things our staff will be working on with all of you is, could there be some additional incentives our city could throw in as a way of maybe enticing that housing growth? And the key, though, is to try to come up with single-family homes, which can either be townhomes, a standalone home, a design home that has a foundation on it of 300,000 or less.
Not including the lot.
Right. So, um, we'll kinda keep you posted on that as it continues, but hopefully it's something, it's taking advantage of the county's using some of their ARPA funds to pass that on to, um, us folks that are part of the county.
You're starting to get all the rules and regulations out to us, so anybody who wants to use a check with us down at City Hall and they can fill in on some of that.
Yep, our city staff will be working with it, we'll all be working with it, and then obviously there'll be some things for you to add input or ideas you might hear from our citizenry too. Other than that, on behalf of the staff, um, thank you for the past year here of working together, and we wish all of you and your families and the rest of our fellow citizens a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
How were cookies?
Just talked to Sharon today, she's working on the second batch.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for finance, or excuse me, city administrator before we close out the year? All right. Thanks, Bill. Finance Director Carla, you got a report?
Um, I think I gave you guys enough to approve tonight, working on all of the end-of-year things. Um, starting to work on some of the pre-audit stuff from Smith Schaefer for the end of this year and just kinda moving forward and wrapping up, um, 2020 at this point.
All right. Thanks for all the hard work you got to put in this year. Any questions for Carla? All right, thank you, Carla. Public Works Director Sean?
Uh, part of the mayor, uh, one thing I wanna, with the snow plowing, the first significant snow plowing of the year, we did have complaints that most of them are in cul-de-sacs and whatnot. One of our guys felt guilty plowing like we normally do when it got later in the day and people are actually out there shoveling, he didn't wanna fill their driveways. And again, I told him from this point on, our policy is when we do a cul-de-sac, we open it up and we just go in a circle until it gets pushed out to the edge and what's, it's consequential, which gets in the driveway. So, he was, from this point forward, don't worry about them, I'll take the heat if they.
You tell our, you tell the boys not to worry about, if they can put more snow on somebody else's driveway than they do mine, don't worry about it.
Well, then we gotta get trucks because we haul it.
I know, you. Send all complaints to me because I'll show them my driveway.
But the policy of how we haul cul-de-sac, what we've done, is that manner. And, you know, if people don't like it, it's just, I don't know what else we do. We haul them out and stuff like that, it takes way too long and too much, you know, money climbs up there. Uh, the other thing was, we had a few mailboxes that got knocked over, and today I dealt with a couple of people that were upset and didn't like the answer we gave them. If our snowplows hit them, we replace the mailboxes. If the snow knocks them over, we do not replace them. There wasn't one that I saw that was hit by the snowplow. They all did admit to that, but they just weren't happy because they wanted their mailbox replaced for nothing. But some of these mailboxes, they like get deteriorated down to nothing, and then it's held up by a thread there and it gets knocked over and they expect us to replace with a brand-new setup. So, that's also been our policy. If there's an issue, I've told a couple of people, if you have an issue, you gotta go to City Hall and talk to council, get a meeting or something like that to change the policy. So, for the most part, it's been that way for as long as I've been here and it seems to work.
I'll just add on to that, that's a very common policy in different studies. If the plow itself hits it, it's covered by the city, if it's snow, it happens over, it's not.
Luckily, most streets are gonna get going dirty out there in the fire when the state comes by at 60 miles an hour. Boy, the mailboxes fly in it, let me tell you. So, is this part, is this part of the beautiful part of the wintertime in Minnesota? I mean, I guess we had too easy the last year, so people can't forget where winter is.
And it's amazing how you have a nice 10 inches of white fluffy stuff, nobody says a word, you get wet heavy stuff, all of a sudden everybody's upset. It's just that much harder to shovel.
Oh, sure, my wife gets upset having to shovel all that snow, you guys.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's human nature because you spend all day getting it all cleared out, and then the next morning you wake up and it's twice as bad and it's out right before you leave for work, and you're like, come on.
That's why you gotta follow the direct angle.
Well, yeah, my wife does it.
She blazes a trail through it.
Yeah, okay. That's all right, I'm used to being.
Well, that is why I told.
I'm used to being oppressed for living in a cul-de-sac.
I told her, the guy who does the cul-de-sacs says, the first time you're throwing it, you get it out to the curb the first time, because, just because people are out there shoveling, at least they're only doing it once, then, otherwise everybody's doing it twice. And they're shoveling that much further out into the road, so.
When did the guys get so bashful? I've had them bury me right up to my waist when I'm out there shoveling.
Well, that was on a two-inch snowfall.
I know. I thought that first three inches we got. All right, anything else for Sean? If not, thank you, Sean, tell the guys thanks, you guys are doing a tremendous job with what you got to work with. All right, city engineers report. Jenna, you got anything else you wanna add for us before the year end?
Um, we do have the letters out for the 2023 CIP project, so we'll have that public hearing in January. Um, we're working on the 2022 design still. Um, Sean and I have a plan to start looking at other roads and giving things prioritized for the future of CIPs. And on top of that, it's been meetings with developers, and also meetings with MDOT, so. Keep me busy and I thank you for that, and I enjoy every year working with you guys.
Are you still in contact or negotiations or talks, whatever you wanna call, wanna stop late out there?
We had a meeting last week on Wednesday. Had some open conversation. And we have a deadline for some comments to come back to us, which will be the end of January, and then I'll, we'll know some more.
All right, any other questions for Jenna? Thank you for all your, our work this past year, Jenna. No library director, no maid over there, is there? Can't see that tree.
No, not.
No maid? No fire chief?
Not tonight, no.
No pool director?
Uh, no.
Well, that's gonna take us to committee commission board reports. Chamber of Commerce. Got nothing in their packet, nobody here, but they, they had a great winter fest, I suppose they're all recovering from that right now. DEA, HRA?
Nothing, no meeting this month.
Finance?
Nothing.
Library? Ain't here. Park board?
No, nothing.
Personnel? Nothing coming up until get some applications, get some applications.
Getting applications, yeah.
Planning zoning?
Uh, the two things were in our agenda tonight and that was it.
Okay, public safety.
Didn't have anything pressing when you met with me today.
All right, public works?
No report.
Ready?
No report.
Rokon?
No reports, meetings were canceled.
Stu 180?
No.
It's no report.
Sorry, sir.
All right, just a second here. Transit Advisory Committee?
No report.
You going out the year on a big one there, aren't you? Well, thanks for doing it anyhow, Dan. Communications, nothing in our bag for the night. Last open mic of the year, anybody wanna use it? Otherwise, we're gonna head right into the favorite motion of the evening.
I'd like to make my very last motion to adjourn for the year of 2021.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second, all in? We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn.
It was a good year for being another COVID year.
Yeah?